Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I do note that all council members are here tonight, so we have a quorum. And I'd like to welcome citizens who have come to our meeting tonight as well. Our first order of business is communication items from council. And we have a special group here tonight that we would like to recognize with a proclamation.
Sure, this is a proclamation signed by Mayor Rowley McCoy. And it reads in part, "Whereas the Victoria Bach Festival is celebrating its 44th season of free and paid concerts during the week of June 1 through 8, 2019. And whereas each calendar year in June for these 44 years, nationally-recognized musicians in the nation's leading orchestras and professors of music of prestigious universities have come to Victoria from all over the United States. And whereas artistic director Alejandro Hernandez Valdez leads the talented and renowned musicians in diverse and profoundly moving programs of music throughout the city at breakfast, noon, and evening concerts. Now therefore, I, Rowley McCoy, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, proclaim the week of June 1 through 8, 2019, to be Victoria Bach Festival Week in Victoria, Texas, and urge our citizens to continue the growth of artistic excellence of this festival by their attendance and support for this important event in our city."
I'd like to add to the proclamation that this is an extremely important event for the city of Victoria. The fact that this has gone, the Bach Festival has been in existence for 44 years is a testament to those who first created it and for those who have sustained it for that time. I think Victoria is noted on the map in many ways for its fine arts accomplishments and the wonderful music. And I put this right up there with the fact that Luciano Pavrate had his first performance in Texas, in Victoria, Texas. And so if y'all would come forward.
Ryan, you want to step to the microphone? Thank you.
No one ever said I was quiet, so. Anyway, on behalf of the Bach Festival, we would sincerely thank the city because you support us through the hotel occupancy tax. I hate to say hot funds, it sounds somewhat questionable. But anyway, two quick things. Number one, your money is well spent. For the community, we have 11 performances, eight of them are free. The morning performances, the noon performances. And this Friday, we will have a free evening performance from Grammy Award-winning singers, which is hard to come by and very special. But also, as the mayor, I think rightly pointed out, the Victoria Bach Festival is putting us on the map artistically and culturally. Today, hot off the press, the Arts and Cultural Texas Magazine ranked, they had the top 10 cultural events in Texas, and we were number four, the Victoria Bach Festival. I disagree that Houston Ballet and two, the Fort Worth Museum with a fantastic exhibit and the Austin Museum with fantastic exhibit were one, two, and three. But we also, below there, were two concerts in Austin and Houston, both performing Bach that we came out ahead. Nationally, I hope all of you read in The Advocate that the Bach scholar in the United States is here this week because he wanted to come in here, and he's also going to lecture. So anyway, we thank your money's well spent. We appreciate it. And in the near future, we will continue to spend it wisely and have concerts for the people by the very best, some of the very best artists in the United States. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd ask if there's any other items from council?
I have a couple of them. Okay, this week, I think it was Saturday, there was a gentleman that came knocking at my door, and I asked him who he was. And he had a bag, and he said he was with AEP. So he said to please let people know that AEP's coming out and changing out your meters if they're having trouble with them. So, I mean, I was ready to call the police and tell them to get off my property, but he showed me where the meter was not working. So I said, "Well, that means you're going to collect more money for me." But he says that he's encountered quite a few people that, you know, because it wasn't announced or wasn't publicized, that they questioned why he's going around changing those meters. And I told him, "Well, I'd bring it up at the city council meeting and let people know." Okay? And the other one was, I had another, when we had the bash last Saturday, there was one of the veterans there, the man is 93 years old, and he still drives. And he said, "Mija, can you please have them stripe the streets because I'm having trouble seeing the stripes?" So that was a request from a 93-year-old veteran. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scott.
I have three items, two of them are short, and one of them may not be. I'd like to pull D3 from the consent agenda. D3. I would just like to say that today, University of Houston, Victoria, had a groundbreaking at what used to be the Old Town Plaza Mall and will now be the University of Houston, Victoria Northwest Campus. The mayor and I were both able to attend. And I'd just like to applaud University of Houston, Victoria, and also the Catholic Church for the significant financial investment that they've made in the Old Town Plaza instead of knocking it down or instead of it turning into a lot of things that might not enhance that neighborhood. They've both done wonderful things. And I just wanted to make sure the public's aware of that and the rest of you are aware that they've now had a groundbreaking, they're going to, the University of Houston, Victoria is going to invest at least $10 million initially in that building. And they will be shuttling their students back and forth. Okay, my other item is, I read an article in the paper about being prepared for hurricanes, and there was some discussion about water towers. And I've heard at this meeting in the last couple of years about valving off water meters, and it was in the article again. So I decided it was time to educate myself and become the engineer that I need to be and learn all about this. So the article raised some questions that I wanted to ask, and Mr. Garson knows that I'm going to ask these questions, so I think he's prepared. But one of the questions-
I better be now.
So the questions are, apparently, according to the article, and I don't know if it's true, the city has a policy about valving off, which I think has to do with water meters, I think that's what, or water towers, water towers. So if that's the policy, when was it made? Who made it? Is it still valid? Is it to protect our infrastructure? Has that been fixed? And then the whole valving off concept, if you have pressure coming from the tower, which is the point of having water in a water tower, and you close the valve, I don't understand the physics. Do you still have the benefit of that pressure if you've closed the valve? Because it doesn't make sense to me that you would. And so if you close off and lose the pressure, what was the point? You're not going to, you're still going to just have gravity flow. And if you open them again, if power goes out and you open them again, because that's apparently why you would have valved them off, then you're going to have a big gush of water. And from what I've seen, that can damage infrastructure. And so I'm just trying to grasp the whole thing and maybe start some conversation and dialogue. And this may be something we have to do over a period of time, but I wanted to-
Sure.
-get some of those answers.
So I'll give it a try, and I'll put my engineering hat, too, on. But thank you for asking the questions because obviously it's been a topic of discussion since the article came out, even among staff. And I've heard from even other council members as well with some questions regarding our level of preparedness because of the wording in the article. And to answer your questions directly, and then I'll kind of provide some additional information. So in terms of the policy, it's, I was just talking to Donald about that before the meeting, it's probably a wrong word for us that staff has been using when referencing the standard operating procedure for it. Because when we use the word "policy," I think we visualize there is a document that says, you know, "This is, this is what you do. When the power goes out, you know, you don't, you don't valve it off," for example. And there isn't anything in writing that suggests to us how to proceed when that happens. And so when we have used, and staff has used the term "policy," it's more so to try and convey that the standard operating procedure historically has been to not. And so when comments are made that our policy is to not valve them off, that's simply just based off of precedent and based off of best practices from the engineers and staff, that that's the best way to approach it. One of your questions was, okay, if it was valved off, how does it occur? Does it occur electronically, manually? And it occurs manually on the site. And that's one of the reasons why the policy has been to leaving them active, because in a scenario where you may need to activate them again, depending on the severity of the natural disaster, you may not even be able to get back to it because it's not something that could be done remotely. So that's part of the reason why the standard operating procedure has been to do that. In terms of your pressure issue, obviously pressure isn't the same once you valve it off, but the intent of, or the, part of where the pressure's created is gravity-fed. So once the water tower's filled and the water filters through, that's where it gets its pressure to run through the system, is, is down and just all gravity-fed. So even if you valve it off, there is, there's still some pressure simply because of the gravity of the water tower, but there's nothing to backfill it. So once you run out, you kind of run out. I know Donald and I talked about the feasibility of, well, do you just activate it without using the water tower and just directly put it into the system? And that's where it would create the issues that you mentioned about pipes bursting because the system's not designed to function that way. It's designed to fill the water tower and then, from gravity standpoint, run through the system. But this issue of whether you valve them off or not, if we were to kind of go around the table, which I'm not suggesting we do for time purposes, we would probably all have different opinions on whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. And we would probably all have scenarios in our heads as to situations where it would make sense and situations where it would not make sense. And so part of what I think we need to shift the conversation towards is the core issue. And the core issue is the electricity and the power issue. Because this, during Harvey, the reason why this was even an issue was because there was no power to the pumps, and that's how it caused even having the conversation about, are you going to valve off or are you not going to valve off? So if we address the core issue, which is the power issue, then there is no concern about what we decide to do because we wouldn't even get to that point. And that's what staff has tried to focus on, from my understanding, over the last, you know, year and a half or whatever time has been. And council has been supportive of that effort to prioritize addressing the core issues. And my conversation with staff, staff prioritized four locations for generators. One which has already been funded, approved, and completed, which was at the raw water pump station. That was about a $274,000 investment. Currently, there's a project that's scheduled to be completed by the end of August, which was a $928,000 investment that was approved in March by this council for the surface water treatment plant. And that project's still in the design, and it'll be completed by the end of August. Pending, however, are still two permanent solutions for generator power, if you will. One being at the water pumping plant number three and one being at the regional wastewater treatment plant. Staff does have cost estimates to these. One of the issues that we had with, with the article was that it kind of implied that staff hadn't even looked at the costs associated with these things, but obviously y'all know that staff has. And so as a refresher, the cost for the generator at, at the water pumping station number three, excuse me, three is $518,000, and at the regional wastewater treatment plant is $872,000. That's not taken into account the ongoing expenses for maintenance. And these numbers are, of course, are from last, from, I don't know, maybe six months ago or so, so they might be slightly higher now. The approach that staff has been proceeding with has been to try and identify grant opportunities to try and fund these outright. In reading the memo that was distributed to city council in March, when you approved the $928,000 generator, there was some language in there referencing an option to purchase-lease some of these. And so that's definitely an option that's still on the table, and we're going to revisit that option as we go through this budget process. Right now, we don't have the funds to outright buy these two without putting in jeopardy, for lack of a better term, our fund balance within the utility fund. Some of you may recall that around this timeframe, Tech dot came to the city and sort of mandated in a way that the city invest almost $2 million to relocate some utilities for their I-69 corridor project, which was an unexpected expenditure for the city. So all of this was going on around the same time. And I feel very certain that if that $2 million hadn't been spent for that Tech dot project, we would have already bought all of these outright with those funds. But staff has been very careful and very conservative in protecting that fund balance for the utility system. But I wanted to throw that information out there to, one, educate for those new members that may not have this context, and also remind council that this is something that staff is obviously considers a priority and has been working on. And obviously, if we had the money, we would have bought them already. But it's something that, that I can guarantee you will be reconsidered as part of the budget moving forward.
One point of clarification, the one generator that got installed and is operational now or can be operational, is it the off-channel reservoir, correct, and not the raw water pump station? Or do we have one there as well?
Sir, the, the one that was installed is at the raw water pump station off of Tibblyletty Road. And those are, those, that's the pump station that pulls out of-
Is it what I'm calling off-channel reservoir pump station?
That's the one that pulls out of the off-channel reservoirs-
Okay.
...and sends the water to the plant.
What do you call the one at the river?
The river pump station.
Okay.
And, and that one, that one, we do not have a generator at because typically in this type of event, the river's already up so high that it's, it's filling the off-channel reservoirs, so we don't need a generator there. And the, the off-channel reservoirs hold about a, I think it's a 90-day, I believe it's a 90-day supply of water for us, three months.
How did I do, Donald?
You did great.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. He knows who signs his check. Really quickly, I also want to add that even though we don't have the permanent solution for these two additional generators, staff envisions addressing these concerns through a contract that we have with Ashbrit, which is actually on the agenda later on. And Darrell's prepared to talk about more specifics of that if you're interested now or later when he discusses his agenda item, in case you have any questions or concerns related to what we're planning on doing in the absence of us owning our own generators.
Did we fund transfer switches at those two locations, though?
Can you confirm?
You're, you're referring to the ones that were already-
Pump station number three and regional wastewater?
When we, the estimates that we have include transfer switches and everything else, automatic transfer switches.
Turnkey project.
Turnkey, turnkey project.
Right, but we don't have current generator hookups. I thought we were going to go ahead and get the generator hookups in place so we didn't have to just take the, the feed lines off and-
No, sir, we did not do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're still connecting directly to the bus bar.
Mr. Bockenack, those are available as part of our Ashbrit contract as well.
What's that?
The hookups, the cabling and everything.
Yeah, but it's a-
Right, but we can get those as well as part of the contract.
Right, but I was looking for, I thought we were going to put a transfer switch on to make it easier to hook up a generator so you don't have to take the leads off and put the generator leads on.
I want to correct myself. Plant number three does have that because that's where we install the, the 600 KW generator that we have on a trailer. It's the regional wastewater treatment plant that does, does not have that capability.
Should that be something we should look at?
We can look at it, for sure.
All right.
Absolutely.
Just to make a generator hookup go that much quicker?
Sure, absolutely.
I hope that answered your question, because I gave you a long answer, but-
Well, I'd like to clarify one thing since I was quoted in the article, too. The shutting off of the towers is only an issue when you lose power. It's the only time it's ever should be considered, and I do agree with staff that that's an operational issue that needs to be decided at the time, given the circumstances that we face at that time, if it should ever occur again. But like the city manager said, if we cure the, the power issue, it won't be an issue. So.
And I, I talked to Mr. Reese about it. I remember reading in the emergency operation manual about valving off. I need to go back through it again. And he, he didn't find it the other day, and I need to look back through it and see where I read it.
Yeah, I've tried to find it in there, and I couldn't.
I have it highlighted in my volume, and I just need to find it.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, and so then we can take it out or do whatever we need to do with it.
Yeah, we may need to address it. So one other question on all of this is, I know we've talked about funding for some of these generators and possibly being able to get government funding, but there are so many different generators we've talked about. I'm not sure, am I all completely, all wet? Was there any that we potentially could get reimbursed for or were waiting for maybe grants? Somebody's going to the-
Yeah, John can address the, he's been the lead on this, on that effort.
There's not a program that will provide reimbursement, but we, we have pending applications through FEMA, through the Hazard Mitigation Program for generators at the police station and the community center.
Okay, they're not related to the water system.
And we have not received word yet whether we'll get funding for those.
Did we not submit applications for the wastewater treatment plant and pump station three?
We considered it, and then when we realized how long it was going to take for, to even get an answer, and the fact that those funds are not, one, they're not guaranteed, and two, they require significant local match, we decided to put the higher priority ones. We moved Ted with the first two and obviously had plans to move ahead on the other two until funding was no longer there. But there's another possibility of, of future grant funding, it's just timing is going to determine whether we, we just need to make those calls locally and get them done.
Thank you, I'll stop asking questions now, for, for that subject.
All right. Are there any other items from council? If not, then I'll move on to citizens' communication. Anyone that has anything to present to council or talk to council about that is not an item that is on a, that requires a public hearing, please step forward.
Hi, I'm Michael Von Dro. I live at East North Mobile Home Park. And I feel the trailer park owner is ripping us off on the water bill. And I went to the water department, and I want to know how they figure it out because I couldn't get an answer. They gave me some agencies to file complaint against the owner. And the problem is, I can't talk to him because he don't return calls. That's just his policy, you know, he's too good for us. And my water bill was $200, and in the past, you know, the owner has been paying for it, but not anymore. And some people, it would be 40 and some 200. And I'm just wondering how he calculates it, because they told me he just pays all 30 lots. And I want to know how it's calculated, like how much per gallon or something, because a lot of the people in the trailer park feel the owner is ripping us off, and we don't want to be ripped off. And I talked to them at the wire commission, and she talked to a supervisor, and they didn't have no answer. But I was wondering if there was someone with an engineering background in the, the water department that could show how he's calculating it, because in my opinion, he's ripping me off and everyone else. Because the way it is, he just charges us whenever he wants, you know, when he says goes, you know? And we really don't like that. We want to know how he's charging us for the water, and maybe there's some engineer or something in the wire department that can break it down. The two people I spoke to, it was above their pay grade, so, you know, I'm not dissatisfied, but, you know, there's bound to be someone. They basically say it was just too complicated to explain, they didn't understand it.
Is there anything we can do?
I-
I think it's a matter of, it appears to me like you have a legal issue with your person that runs your trailer.
Well, he's crooked, you know?
Well, but all that I think the city can tell you is what the water usage is.
Mr. Rodger, if you'd like to come by my office, we can talk about this in greater detail. I don't think there's anything that the city will be able to do to help you with a personal dispute between you and your landlord, but we can certainly talk about the issue if you'd like to come by my office.
You know, it's like when you go to buy a hamburger, they break, and you buy fries at a hamburger joint, they break it down, two for the hamburger, this and that. The general manager don't go and charge everyone a different amount for the burgers and stuff, but yeah, I, I could do something like that. I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else with anything to share with council? You'll give your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Gary Harland. I live on Blath Road and have since 1969. I'm here tonight to ask you, actually to plead with you, to please as soon as possible and install a couple of speed bumps on Tine Street and on Blath Road.
What was that first street, sir? I need to clarify.
Tine Street, there, it's, we live at the intersection, or on the corner of Tine and Blath. And first of all, I think, well, I think, the drivers ignoring the traffic sign and speeding and blowing the stop sign is something we've tolerated for years out there. And where are the police, you ask? Good question. We've asked for years, and everybody in the neighborhood, and we still don't have a decent answer. But irregardless of that, we know, and first thing you're going to say is the police can't be everywhere all the time. Speed bumps can. And they don't even want to belong to a union, they don't want raises, they don't want benefits, they just want to work 24 hours a day. And one buzzword that politicians really like and came to my mind was quality of life. Boy, that's one of, is anybody here against quality of life? Good quality of life, that's, that's important. Splash pads, dog parks, well, how about the quality of life in our neighborhoods where we live and sleep and raise our families? Isn't that important? And if it is, then what about the neighborhoods where we live? With some of the quality of life that does, we want it looking for a quality of life that does not include drivers speeding and blowing through stop signs to shave five seconds off their trip to Walmart. If you have doubts about the effectiveness of speed bumps, I urge you to contact your counterpart in the city, in the suburb of Houston, of Huntington Village. It's on the west side of Houston, it's just north of Alvin and just north of Sugar Land. They installed them about a year ago, and they would certainly be able to give you some up-to-date information. The other thing that Councilman Lofkin came out and visited the neighborhood in the area oh, a month or so ago, so he really understands the problem we have. And so if you want to talk to him for further information and detail, he could certainly give it to you. I think, well, I know he's visited, so he would have most current information. But speeding is totally out of control out there, all, and not, not just in North, actually we live in Highland Estates, but Northcrest and all the surrounding area. It's the fastest-growing, y'all, I'm going to tell you this, fastest-growing area of Victoria. And a lot of the problem is, excuse me, Tine is a little two, three-block street there, and our Luster School Board creates as many problems as they solve by building schools where there's no roads that go to them. And the, I couldn't understand, we've been out there since 69, why there was so much traffic in the last year or so on Tine Street. Little three-block street there, running from Ball Airport down to Blath, goes absolutely nowhere. Well, building Terra Vista, those people are avoiding the school zone for Shattlemore School on Mallett and Ball Airport. So it's thrown all that traffic down. And if anybody, if you want to come out and sit in my driveway in an unmarked car- And if anybody, if you want to come out and sit in my driveway in an unmarked car, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll give you a Chris $50 bill for everybody stops at a stop sign on Tine and Blythe, but you got to give me a $50 bill for everybody runs it. And I, one or all, anybody wants to take it, you're welcome. I'd sure like to do that because I can retire again, a lot wealthier than I am now. But seriously, speed bumps, some of the council in the past have been against them. They work. I don't know why we don't have, what I, we hear they don't have enough police officers to patrol, patrol the area. We never see a police car. And irregardless, they don't work traffic. Now, a year or so ago, they'd come out, 2:00 in the afternoon, and stay 15, 20 minutes, maybe 30 minutes. And that helps some because I'm a strong believer that you need to show the flag occasionally. We don't even get that. And so anyhow, I, that's what I'm here for. And I'll close by asking you to please consider strongly and quickly installing two-speed bumps. It would take two on Tine, one between Ball Airport and Perth, and the other between, one between, on Blythe between Mallett and Tine, and the other between Tine and, and Glasgow. Would greatly slow it down. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, is there anyone else that wants to speak before council? If not, then we will move on with the items for public hearings.
Excuse me. Item C1 on the agenda is a resolution granting an annexation petition from DGMP Incorporated for approximately 3.19 acres of land, authorizing the city staff to prepare an ordinance for city council consideration and declaring an effective date.
Okay, we'll open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
I move to accept item C1.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve C1. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Put me for aye. I didn't say. Opposed? Passes. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, pulling item D3, I think it was.
That's correct. That leaves eight items remaining on the consent agenda that will be approved by a single vote tonight. They are, first, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st, 2019. Second, an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits to the city of Victoria, Texas, and the annexation of territory consisting of approximately 74 acres of land near the intersection of the proposed Placido Benavides Drive and Salem Road, adopting a service plan for the territory, providing for publication and savings, and declaring an effective date. D4 is a resolution approving the expenditure in the amount of $54,589.70 for the purchase and installation of mobile radio repeaters, mobile Wi-Fi area network, and emergency communications equipment from Victoria Communications Services for a regional mobile communications unit project to upgrade the city's communications and response during emergencies, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date. E5, D5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement from SHI Government Solutions Incorporated through a government established, excuse me, through a contract established by the state of Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Contracts Program in the amount of $41,428.92 and declaring an effective date. D6 is an ordinance granting the Victoria Electric Cooperative the right, privilege, and franchise to construct, install, extend, remove, replace, abandon, operate, and maintain its facilities with the, within the public rights of way of the city of Victoria, Texas, for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of electrical energy, containing provisions relating to the foregoing subject, providing for savings, and providing for an effective date. D7 is an amended resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for, and if awarded, accept a grant from the Texas Office of the Attorney General's Criminal Justice Division Rifle-Resistant Grant Program in the amount of $27,822.46 with no matching funds required from the city to be used for the purchase of body armor for the Victoria Police Department and declaring an effective date. D8 is a resolution designating the city manager as the authorized official to approve the fiscal year 2020 Automobile Burglary Theft Prevention Authority Grant, designating Detective Jerry Sepulveda as the program director for the grant, designating Director of Finance Gilbert P. Rainier Jr., CPA, as the financial officer of the grant, and declaring an effective date. And D9 is a resolution approving a payment of additional expenses in the amount of $23,158 to Odessa Pumps for the repair of a two-stage vertical pump at the city's raw water pump station, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete this repair and declaring an effective date.
I move we adopt.
Second it. Second it.
Correct.
Without, yeah, D3.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we accept the consent agenda with, with the exception of item D3? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item D3 is a resolution granting a variance to Section 20-90, which requires non-conforming driveways to be removed when a site plan is required for development, and Section 21-54, which requires sidewalks to be installed or a sidewalk agreement and covenant to be filed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for property located at 1915 North Navarro Street and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve as they open for discussion?
I asked for this to be pulled because I had some concerns and some questions on it. For one, it's a variance to allow, it's variance to the requirement of installing a sidewalk. And the sidewalk agreement that's proposed doesn't list a particular street. And I think that we're only granting this variance on Red River, even though right now there's a driveway and it's more or less paved. I try to both look at the property as it is now, but imagine what if it's knocked down tomorrow? And so I want to make sure that this variance to the sidewalk agreement, number one, is just for Red River. And number two, I'd like to explore whether we can limit this entire variance to the existing use or the existing structure and what the rest of the council feels about that.
Well, the variance...
The, I'm sorry.
The variance for Red River? Sidewalk is, because it's going to be rebuilt. Red River's going to be rebuilt.
Because Red River's going to be rebuilt. I'm talking about if this business changes ownership and the building gets rebuilt.
That's going to start a whole new site plan and plat.
Right.
I think, I think by definition and by default, the variance only applies to the existing applicant, doesn't it?
It's...
Actually, in the, in the city of Victoria, we typically write them to apply to the property so that it runs with the land.
Oh, okay. Never mind. It's different.
And Thomas can correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, usually sidewalks are a result of a building permit being issued. We can't issue a CO until a sidewalk is installed. So I'm not sure if in this case it would tie to that building permit that they're requesting. And of course, you know, sidewalk agreement covenant, of course, can always be, I guess, called by council and the property owner required to install a sidewalk if that's council's choosing.
Let me clarify a little further. I recognize that Red River's being rebuilt and sadly won't have a sidewalk on that side, which is why this sidewalk agreement is being proposed to begin with. But again, that's what's there today, and that's what's up and down that block today. But if there are changes in that block, changes in the use of those properties, then it would be feasible to put in a sidewalk. And I don't like to see the city give up something that it has an opportunity to verify or solidify that it could have in the future.
Isn't it saying here that there wasn't enough right-of-way to install a sidewalk on that side of the road?
Currently.
Well, that's all the properties down there. If you put a sidewalk here, where's it going to go?
But, and that's what the sidewalk agreement is for. It says that the sidewalk does not have to be installed at this time. And I, I have no objection to that.
Yeah, we physically don't have the right-of-way to put the sidewalk on that side of the road now or in the future. You're going to have to have someone come by the whole side of that road to be able to have a sidewalk that goes anywhere.
That doesn't mean that that isn't going to happen over time with other developments. Somebody could combine two lots. If they combined two lots, they would bring a plat to us. There's an opportunity to secure some additional right-of-way.
Well, if we don't have any right-of-way to put in the sidewalk, wouldn't you just destroy the street that we're putting in? Because aren't you going to have to break down the curb and, you know? Because you don't have any right-of-way left.
I'm not proposing that we require them to put in a sidewalk. I am not proposing that. I just want to make sure that the sidewalk agreement is for Red River and that it is for the existing use of the building.
Even if, I still don't see the point because even if that building got torn down and you put up something else, you're still going to have no need for a sidewalk along Red River right there. It's going to go nowhere. There's, you can't go further towards Maine with a sidewalk.
And, and so at that point, we might decide to continue a sidewalk agreement until the rest of the area develops as well.
The area is developed.
Up to the street. A hundred years from now, it may not look like that.
The sidewalk won't hold up a hundred years.
Hey, let's see, it's an issue that, a solution in search of an issue. I just don't think this is a problem. Makes us pretty common sense approach that we don't need a sidewalk right there. It's not going to, you, you can't apply that logic to anywhere. Say, well, what happens in 100 years in there?
Okay, so what's before us right now, again, to be clear, does not require a sidewalk, is allowing a sidewalk agreement, which means that there could potentially be a sidewalk if we ever needed one. And that's what's being proposed. That's what, and I'm, I'm in favor of that. I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to make sure that, that it is covering Red River. And I just really wanted it pulled so we could have some discussion. I didn't think it would be this contentious.
At its core, it sounds like your issue is, is that you're concerned that by granting this variance, the city won't have an opportunity 50 years from now to go back and reconsider.
I just don't want us to lose that opportunity. And, and if you can assure me that we won't, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and I don't know, since apparently things are different here, but...
Well, the, the, the variance itself would apply to the property, but the variance allows the Development Services Division to enter into the sidewalk agreement that would not otherwise be available for this property. So the sidewalk agreement itself could be limited to that side of the property, the Red River side. Say, and, and it would then say, for, for people who aren't following this conversation, the sidewalk agreement would say that the property owner agrees to put that sidewalk in in the future if ever the need for that sidewalk arose. That agreement could be limited to the Red River side of the property, if that's what you're trying to say.
I just want to make sure that it definitely applies to that side.
I believe it applies to both sides of the property as, as the, as the resolution is currently written. It only says that variance is granted so that a sidewalk agreement can be granted to that property.
Okay. All right. I'm all right with that. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E1 is a resolution approving procurement policies and procedures for federal grants related to Hurricane Harvey federal assistance as administered by the Texas General Land Office, authorizing the city manager to sign the adopted plan and declaring an effective date.
Move to approve item E1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I could, give you a very brief explanation of not only this item, but the one that follows it on the agenda. These are basically some housekeeping processes that we need to approve in order to move forward with our grant applications with the GLO. Every grantee in this disaster declaration is required to adopt both these procurement policies and the public participation plan, which is the following agenda item. I hope to be back before you in two weeks with resolutions authorizing both of our grant applications. I feel very confident that we'll have one, at least one of them ready in two weeks. I'm hoping to have them both ready. Far enough along draft applications that you can authorize their submission at our next meeting.
I think that's good news.
I think it is. Our deadline is August 31st. We don't, 30th, we don't want to wait until August 30th because we're going to be at the end of the line of all the grantees whose, it's not that we won't get the money, it's that the longer we wait to turn in the application, the longer we wait to get the money. Because they're going to view, they're going to review these as they receive them.
Other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving E1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E2 is a resolution adopting a citizen participation plan for federal grants related to Hurricane Harvey federal assistance as administered by the Texas General Land Office, authorizing the city manager to sign the adopted plan and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the fourth and final renewal of the agreement with Ashbrit Incorporated for debris response and recovery, which includes a CPI increase in accordance with the contract terms and declaring an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Could you explain in, in this contract how we, or if we modified it to include anything for generators?
We did. We modified it to add a 1,500 KW generator, which is the biggest generator that we need to run any, it's actually bigger than what we actually need to run, I believe, the surface water plant, the surface water treatment plant, regional.
Regional wastewater, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And so that has been added to the contract. Now, we were able to get that generator after Harvey. However, we were at the mercy of whatever the price was at the time. By adding it to the contract now, we have a price set so that when we order that generator and it comes in, we're not having to haggle over the price.
How did we work the issue that we had with Ashbrit last time when they didn't have to honor the rates anymore?
We, that was a, if you remember, that was a 30, or actually, it was, we had a set date for that. I believe it was 90 days. But the problem that we had was that FEMA and the state released all competitive bids at that point and said, you can get whoever you want. And so at that time, we negotiated a price in order to keep people here and from going to Houston. Our hope is that we no longer have that issue. Now, we did not use our 2% that we qualify for by having a pre-approved plan by FEMA, by the state of Texas. So we still have that 2%. There is no, I can't guarantee what the state's going to do if they do that again. We believe we're at rates, and Rick can back me up, but in discussions, we believe that we tie in with everybody else in the state. But there are still people who don't have contracts and who will pay whatever it takes possibly to get it there. That comes down to, do they release them from the competitive bidding process that we've gone through and done our homework?
Is there any way to protect ourselves from that?
The political process through the state is probably...
No, but I mean, through a contract with Ashbrit and say, we already have a contract rate. Once your guys are here, you're here to, until the job's finished. They can't leave. Otherwise, you...
We, we could certainly try to include provisions in there like that, but the, the penalty for breaking that clause would be the same penalty as breaking the contract as a whole, which is just that it's a breach of contract. So we already have that available to us. Adding an additional penalty clause in there, such as liquidated damages clause, really wouldn't provide the additional leverage, I don't believe, that you would need to keep Ashbrit from leaving here and going to Houston.
If I recall at the time, they were going to keep a minimum here, right?
They were going to keep a minimum, and that's the thing. Thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Young. Mr. Bott, we talked to Ashbrit about trying to include a minimum in here. None of the contractors will do that, unfortunately. And we can put that, you know, this is going to go out to bid. This fall, I believe, we'll be putting it out to bid. So we can put a minimum in there. That may limit who actually does it because depending on the severity of the storm, and we, we would not have had that problem had we not had, what, two major storms in two weeks? So that's what really... we not had, what, two major storms in two weeks. Um, so that's what really hurt us. What the state did and what FEMA did, releasing bids or from doing the competitive bid, was what they had to do in order to get people to move around, unfortunately.
Okay.
And to, to further clarify, didn't they say they, they would stay and they would honor the price, but at that point, we were not comfortable that everything would be done by the deadline of the time in order for us to put in for reimbursement and get the additional.
Well, that was a self-imposed deadline by the city. It was not a, it was a deadline that we set that we wanted to have everything back to normal as soon as possible. We, this could have taken a year. I mean, there are cities that are still cleaning up. We managed to do it in three months. Over a half a million cubic yards of brush in three months. We set that goal. Uh, we made the decision to make it happen that, that fast. Um, they would have left us some trucks. The problem is, is you have to remember this, this, the way this works is you have these big companies like Ashbrit and, and others that pay subcontractors. Subcontractors get paid by the cubic yard. You're gonna go where you can get the most cubic yards per haul or per hour, because that's where you make your money. So Ashbrit would have stayed here. We had one contractor who was willing to stay here. We had already had one contractor who pulled out, because he could go to Houston and get $50 a cubic yard rather than Victoria. The good thing for us is that they started coming back, because when you go to Houston and you get in traffic, you have to wait two hours at a landfill to dump. You know what? Victoria's not bad with a 45-minute round trip to the landfill and all the brush piled up in small areas. So those contractors started to come back for both us and the county. So it's lessons learned. Um, it would be very hard, though, I think, to get a contractor, but we can put it in our, in RFP that we put out this fall.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Item E4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a renewal of the annual supply contract for gasoline and diesel fuels with New Distributing Company Incorporated, based on the Victoria Placido Oil Price Information Service, daily branded low rack price for an estimated total amount of $1,083,813 and declaring an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this matter?
Yes, I have some questions. Um, this is based on the 2015, 16 fuel purchases of 367 gallons of unleaded gas and 222 gallons of unleaded gas. How much of that do we use per year?
Pretty much all of it.
All of it?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're staying with those old figures, although it's?
We, we went with figures we're comfortable with.
Okay. That's enough. I mean, we're not gonna have to do budget amendments or anything for that.
We haven't had to, I'm sorry, Gilbert, go ahead, but we haven't had to.
Uh, Mr. Lee's in the budget, you know, when I do those analysis and everything else, for the 19 fiscal year, I, I consider the gallons, and we have, I have history for usage and everything. What also plays in is your, uh, price for oil, gas, and everything else fluctuates. So overall, in a nutshell, the 2019 budget has about an average $2.80 from the city side. That translates to maybe a $3 gas price at Chevron, or wherever you go yourself. I haven't hit that mark yet, so I'm very comfortable with this level.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm, I'm planning to come in under, but you never know with the whole price of generation. So I'm very comfortable. The budget is higher than what he's showing here.
Okay.
I have 1.2.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Put me down.
Okay. You don't have that city manager.
No.
There's, there's no city manager reports or work session, if you'll take us into the next executive session?
Sure. The city council will reassess for executive session now on the fourth day of June 2019 at 5:54 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code, Section 551.087, "To discuss or deliberate the offer of financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the city of Victoria, and with which the city of Victoria is conducting economic development negotiations." Thank you.
We're gonna go to City Hall.
And for the new guy?
Yes.
Will we have to get back here to adjourn the meeting?
We do not. We can adjourn directly.